It worked.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Scioto Township. Oh, we have somebody knocking at the door.
Right, yeah.
Ryan, can you get that?
Don't get up. Joining together.
Yes. All right.
Yeah.
All right, well, welcome, everyone, and this is the Scioto Township Planning Commission meeting for October 23rd, 2024. Ben, roll call, please.
Missioners of the Scioto Township Planning Commission, Abel, present. Moore.
Present.
Olbertson.
Present.
Rothney.
Yes.
Walsh, here. Hi.
Present. Advisor is absent.
Okay. I do expect Commissioner Reiser to attend. It may be the parking surprise.
Yeah.
All right. Um, moving to the adoption of the agenda, is there anyone that wants to, um, add, change, revise?
Move to approval, support.
Moved by Bob Hyde, supported by Bob Walsh, to approve the agenda as posted. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is adopted as posted. Communications and correspondence? I did send an email. It was after four o'clock today, um, with some additional information on childcare licensing. Um, and unfortunately, I apologize for being so late. I didn't think, um, there would be, you know, some things to discuss necessarily with the licensing, but, um, that will be uploaded, um, um, in, in the meeting record. And it's just, if people want to Google it, you go to the state of Michigan, uh, childcare rules, and the, the, it's called draft rule, 2024 draft rules. Um, if the people who are tuned in want to find that document.
I saw that, but unfortunately, I was headed out the door when I saw it.
Yeah, that's fine. We can, I mean, i- it's a long document, but it, what, what I wanted to discuss is a very short section of it, so. All right, um, any other communications or correspondence?
Do we need to note the email from Doug Luan about the tax road next meeting?
Oh, I was, yeah, I was gonna include that in our, in my report. Yeah, that's fine. Uh huh. All right, then we'll move to public comment. We have one person here, if you'd like to address the planning commission in any way. Come up and sign in and just introduce yourself. So you're in the record. There's a signup sheet for a public comment that you can just sign in. Yeah. So you can understand how to do public comment in a, in a public meeting.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Roland. I'm here for an assignment for Eastern Michigan.
Well, welcome.
Welcome.
What's the assignment?
I have to attend a commission meeting and write a four to five page paper about it.
For the planning commission?
Uh, planning commission, city council or township board meeting, or a zoning board meeting.
Yeah, very nice. And there is a public comment at the end, so, um, of, of the meeting, post to the end of the meeting, and right before we adjourn. And so if you have any questions or, you know, um, about anything, you're welcome to come back and, and comment again. Okay?
Why did you choose Scioto?
I live nearby. It was easy to get here because I just hopped on 94 and just drove across.
Well, great. Well, welcome. All right, I just want to say, Commissioner, welcome Commissioner Reiser, 7:04.
You're welcome.
All right, uh, there's no one else in township hall, so we'll turn to our public online.
Rob Pattinson.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Scioto Township President. I would just like to note that tonight you were having trouble getting the Zoom going. And I got a call from Christie, who was at home vacuuming. And that, um, person is such a rock star that from home, she got the new Zoom ID going, got it posted into the agenda and posted onto the website. And, um, I sent an email to the community to, uh, let them know there's a new number. But we, we never got a fix on a, on a Zoom ID from any of the other previous managers. So thank you very, very much, interim manager Christie Aiken, very well done. And Roland, I'm, I'm sorry. The, the fates, uh, weren't smiling on you tonight. They don't have a, a major project that they're discussing tonight. It's gonna be a very limited discussion. So you, you might, uh, be able to come back for another meeting, um, or one of the other committee meetings, um, to help you with your project. Good luck.
Especially if you want some fireworks.
Yeah, indeed.
Okay, commissioners?
Oh.
All right.
You answered.
All right, um, anyone else?
No.
And I would like to, um, just extend our thanks to Christie as well, um, because without that new ID, we were not, we would not be able to, um, have a hybrid meeting. So, all right, um, anyone else?
No.
Okay. Then we'll move to, uh, the approval of the minutes of, um, 2020 of our 10:07.
We need full focus time.
What's that? Oh, yeah. Sorry, thank you.
For?
Okay, moved by Commissioner Reiser, uh, supported by, uh, Commissioner Hyde to close the public comment. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're closing public comment at 7:07. Thank you. Um, all right, approval of our minutes, our last meeting.
Before we rise her.
Right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Minutes are approved as submitted. Right, we have no public hearings this evening, and I'll just edit a little bit for you, so, um, uh, typically, public hearings are required for, um, certain site plans, like a conditional use, something that wouldn't be a by right site plan, would require a rezoning, uh, which, uh, plan unit development would be your conditional use, or, uh, you know, that type of thing. Um, and notification, if it's a general zoning ordinance, it has to go out, it, it gets published, and, uh, the idea is that, uh, anyone, you know, in the township would be able to access it. There's specific notification if it's a specific property that goes to people within owner, property owners within 300 feet. So that's sort of the notification process. And if we had a project tonight that had a public hearing, typically, uh, the applicant, who might be a developer, it might be a, uh, just the property owner, whatever, typically, um, does a presentation. They've already gone through a process prior to this with, um, township planner, township engineer, the fire department, et cetera. They review, um, all of the submittals. And so when they're ready and recommended for approval, they come to the planning commission. So sometimes, so it might be, you know, if it's a more complex development, it might be three months, um, once they submitted, and it goes through all the reviews and they revise things, um, they have to go get, um, approvals from the, um, water, the, uh, Washtenaw County, uh, Water Resources, the Road Commission. There are just a lot of different parties that review and comment on, on site plan development. So it can be a long process. And then we are a recommending body. So, and, and that isn't always the case. Some, it depends on, um, how, uh, the planning commission is charged, but we typically recommend then to the Board of Trustees, who have the final authority to approve, um, the site plans, the zoning ordinances, whatever. The only exception to that is the master plan. The Board of Trustees does not need to necessarily, um, approve the master plan. So that's, uh, in a nutshell, anybody want to add to?
No, but with respect to ordinance review.
Yes.
Is he for, like, for class or school?
Yeah, he's attending for, uh, uh, class at Eastern.
But we're, are we gonna be talking about the childcare ordinance?
Oh, yeah.
That'll be, that'll be, that'll
Yeah.
That can get tricky, um, either tonight or at a future thing. And I, I can hand him my, um, copy, and I can look at it online.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah, and if you, uh, you don't have your computer, but typically, everything, uh, from meetings are posted online, and you can look at the meeting packets and that type of thing. Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, um, then we'll, we have, um, discussion, and Laura, our planner, is online tonight. Uh, the engineers are not joining us tonight because they really didn't have anything, uh, way in on. So with that, I'll turn it over to Laura, and you can talk a little bit about, um, you know, the, the reason for the update and so forth. Yes.
So, um, we, Carlisle Wortman, were, um, worked with Ann Arbor Spark. They actually requested assistance on developing a model, model zoning regulations for childcare based upon the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act and the Childcare Organization Act. So those are both state laws that, um, the township, city, county, village has to abide by through the Zoning Enabling Act. And then childcare organizations, the daycares that are licensed by the state also have to, um, follow. And so in, um, the model ordinance that we reviewed, which I didn't provide to you in your packet, but I, I think after, um, receiving Jan's information, I'm gonna send this, um, model ordinance information that we did for Spark. Um, and I'll have it uploaded to the packet, um, later, just for future discussions and, and for your, for your information. Um, but it, basically, it found that there were, you know, three areas that these acts, um, uh, you know, recommended, um, the same language in the act in the, as in the ordinance. And so in review of all of the ordinances in Washtenaw County, which Carlisle Wortman did, we provided a table that showed in which areas each community, um, either met the requirements of the state laws, um, partially, uh, met those criteria, or if they, uh, needed additional language. And so in our ordinances, we actually are, did very well, um, as you can see from the draft that we'll go over. Um, there are only some minor things that we were missing from, um, our definition section, and then also regarding outdoor play and, um, uh, separation distances from other, other, um, uh, sim, other similar, and maybe, um, not so, not so great things you want to be near as a daycare provider. So the model ordinance looked at making sure the definitions met, uh, were the same as in the Zoning Enabling Act. Um, in our ordinance, we lacked, um, what's, it's called, um, sorry, I got all my, I have a very small table here at home, so I'm getting all my papers mixed up. Um, um, we were lacking the, um, increased capacity portion of, of the or, of the definition, um, under daycare facility. It allows for the addition of one child in a family daycare home, which is, a family daycare home allows for up to seven children. Um, and two children in a group daycare home, which is six to 12 children, um, when, when granted in accordance with a license from the state of Michigan. So they actually allow for increased capacity when the person holding the license, um, is granted so by the state of Michigan. So we added that to our definition section. I guess I should, I want to step back a second. So there are three, there are three kinds of daycare facilities. Um, there is the family daycare home, which I mentioned is typically a residential home that is licensed for up to seven children. Uh, then there's the group daycare home, which is typically, which is another, is a residential home that would be licensed for six to 12 children. And then there's a daycare facility that is a commercial operation that is either in its own facility, or as part of a church, or some other, um, building. Um, maybe it's in a, you know, it's, an employee might have a daycare center. So those are the three different types. In, um, our ordinance, we allow for all family daycare homes to be permitted use in all residential districts. And we're required to do that by the state law. The state law says that that's where we were, we are, we have to allow them as permitted uses. Um, the law also says that group daycare homes can, those six to 12, um, child residential daycares, um, can be considered special land use or conditional land uses in all residential districts, and we also do that. So we've met the cri, the state criteria for the sighting and the, um, and the district. Um, we also allow for daycare facilities in a number of, I think, the higher, um, the higher density residential areas, like the multifamily, and in commercial zoning. So those are the, the commercial daycare facilities. Um, the rest of, you know, the model ordinance that I provided for you is, you know, the blue area are the only items that are changing. Um, there's the increased capacity in the definitions. Um, in group daycare homes, the law says that, um, a daycare home shall not be located closer to 15 feet from the following facilities. It includes another licensed group daycare home, an adult foster care home, a facility offering substance abuse and treatment, um, that is licensed by the state, and a community correction center. Um, and then the only, then, then there, the other, um, I think thing that Jan wants to talk about is the requirement for outdoor play. Um, and they, the state increased the minimum area that they are requiring for outdoor play. It's a minimum of 600 square feet for a group daycare facility, or 50 square feet per child, whichever is greater. Uh, the planning commission can waive this if there's a public park or other recreation facility that the children can go to within 500 feet. Um, and these are really the same, um, modifications that were made to the daycare standards as well. Um, there is also a separation, uh, I believe, and, um, the outdoor, no, I'm sorry, it's the outdoor play, um, was increased, and they, they require a fence in the law. Um, so that's, I guess that's the gist. Um, I did not have time to look at, um, the draft rules. I don't know anything about those. I, they, I know they weren't contemplated in the model ordinance. I don't know, I don't know how those rules apply to, um, the State Childcare Organization Act. Um, so I guess I can't really comment on any of that at this, at this time.
Bob, first, let's use him.
Yeah, do you wanna, do you wanna talk a little bit about what Sparks, um, uh, what was their sort of purpose in doing this?
Sure, they, um, so the purpose was to assist zoning, to assist with municipalities with zoning changes to make it easier for childcare providers to open and expand programs.
Okay.
Uh, and so they, they, I think they're finding that, um, there are people that are finding it difficult to find childcare. Um, and, and, and it's, and it's, it's, it's interfering with work, right? It's interfering with full-time work with, um, you know, maybe women that, um, single parents, or, you know, male single parents, um, just is not, um, available childcare. Um, and so they're trying to find ways to make this, um, easier, um, for, for the childcare providers to expand and, and provide more service. That being said, you know, our ordinance, when, you know, we looked at all the municipalities in West Washtenaw County, and ours was, was actually, our ordinance is actually fairly in line with the state regulations, and, um, we were doing a better job than others, I guess.
All right, thank you. But.
I did have one question, Laura. Um, it would be C9. And my question is, well, the way I read this, the way I understand it, is if there's a facility nearby that's one of these listed ones, uh, within 1,500 feet, I think it was, then they can't open a daycare center. But if you open a daycare center and then another one of these, uh, establishments comes along afterwards, uh, that's okay. So what I'm getting at is, why does the order of which one goes in first matter?
Well, I think, because there are probably some that are established that are within this 1,500 feet. And so already, and so it's, I think, what I think this is saying is, it's not, you, if you're both, you're both there already, you're still gonna be able to be renewed, even though you don't meet the separation requirement. A new one couldn't be cited within that 1,500 feet. So, but if there, if there are two already existing, um, they would allow a renewal of the permit, of the license.
So if there's a, if there's a, um, facility, and I'm not talking about a daycare facility, um, but it's listed in section C1, which include, you know, uh, halfway house, for instance. So if there's a halfway house there, and they want to open a daycare center too close to it, forget it, can't do it. But if you open a daycare center, and then some, somewhere down the line, a halfway house moves in, that's okay. Why does the state say that's okay?
I, I can't answer that for the state.
Why would we say that's okay? But isn't that zoning 101, pre, pre-existing?
No, 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 I just, A comes in, then B can't. But if B is in there, A can come in anyway. Why is that?
But I, I don't know that it could, Bob. I don't know that it could. I mean, it was, the halfway house would still have to meet, um, the group home requirements of the ordinance, which, which we ha, we have, um, adult group home regulations.
Well, B, maybe I read it wrong. What is this?
I guess the other possibility is if someone comes in and is told no, and they go to the ZBA, and the ZBA says yes.
Actually, actually, you can't give a use variance in a township.
Never mind. Thank you.
You can give a se, so they could ask for the separation distance, but I think you'd say no. I mean, that's state, because it's based on the state law.
Sure. Okay. Well, it's, and do you know when this legislation passed?
Um, well, the Zoning Enabling Act was last amended, um, probably just a couple of years ago. I don't know when this, the, I mean, this, um, this is probably just a couple of years old, the, the childcare stuff in the Zoning Enabling Act. As far as the Childcare Organization Act, I do, I do not know when it was last amended.
Okay. All right. Yeah, because it, it would, and, and just so folks know, I get, I gave you the, the draft rules. They're going, the draft rules from the licensing.
Yeah, the administrative rules.
Yeah, the administrative rules. Now, those have not been adopted yet. Those are the, those are the draft rules that they've, um, promulgated. I did not look up where they are in the process. And, uh, just for an explanation, for, um, administrative rules are rules that are, um, crafted administratively in the state. And they are, they go through a public hearing process, you know, they get, uh, all sorts of feedback. Draft rules, um, get out, they have to have a public hearing. And then they get vetted internally, legal and all of that. And then they go to what's called the Joint Committee on Administrative Rules, JCAR. And they, that committee is both a republic, it's a bipartisan committee, and they can choose to, um, take a look at those rules, they can send them back, they can not act. If they don't act within 15 joint session days, then the rules are automatically adopted, and so forth. That's and that includes building codes, energy codes, uh, licensing rules, uh, they're just an ocean of administrative rules.
But those rules are, that's, that's just illustrative. That's not something Scioto enforces to our ordinance.
No, not at all.
Something that's
Not at all.
If enforced, it's at the state level?
It's the, it, it, they're typically licensing, or, um, well, in the building codes would be, um, um, enforced at whoever is doing, you know, that would be Washtenaw County for us, um, that type of thing. So. But typically, we don't enforce any kind of licensing. Um, yeah. Kim.
Um, regarding D6, Laura, um, that last sentence about the planning commission may waive, um, this requirement if the center is located within an existing use, such as a school or a place of worship.
Mm-hmm.
So what's, what, why, what, what you thinking there, or what's, and this is in accordance with the new state stuff?
Yeah, this is what the law allows. It says that, um, in single-family residentially zoned districts, a daycare center, so the largest, um, facility, can, shall only be located on a major or minor thoroughfare as designated in the master plan. So basically, this is saying it can only be on a, um, uh, major or minor arterial road, which is typically paved. Um, and if you had a church that was on a, uh, dirt road, gravel road, then a daycare would not be allowed there. But under this provision, the planning commission can waive this requirement if the daycare center is located within an existing school or, uh, place of worship. So we wouldn't just allow a daycare on its own to be on Marshall Road in an office service center. That's, that's part of, just as an example, that's
No, I understand the language. I get the language. I'm just wondering if, or a school or a place of worship, what about a place that's not derived from a place of worship? That, that I'm just thinking about, um, um,
Yeah, what about a community center or something like that?
There are some people that don't attend places of worship. They tend to community centers, or they tend, whatever their, their shtick is. I just, I'm wondering if, I'm, I'm, I hear you, we'll, we'll be in line with the statute, but Michigan's been known to get it wrong. Uh, so it just, I'm wondering if that's, um, uh, setting up for suit for disparate treatment.
Or do they only give two examples, and there are more? Are that state law?
Yeah, that's what the state law says. But that doesn't mean that you can't, you couldn't say, or a community center, or some other, I mean, you can, you can, you can say that.
Be more strict, right?
Can't be more restrictive, yes.
So, but now, single-family residentially zoned district is interesting because Trailwoods is not single-family residential. Or is it? Isn't it PUD? So, uh, sometimes whether something's residentially zoned is a misnomer because a lot of PUDs are residential. So you can stick these in a PUD neighborhood, you can't stick them in SFR. On a zoning map. I think you're Single-family residential.
I think you're logical.
SFR one.
You mean the daycare center?
That's right, that's right, that's right. So I guess sometimes, single-family residential doesn't capture everything you intend to capture.
Although a PUD would have to be amended to include a daycare center, right?
You would?
Uh, yes, a daycare center use, if that wasn't, um, an original use that was, um, shown on the plan and in, in the, the rezoning documents, yes.
But it gets, it gets, so someone could plop one down in a PUD, if they reapply.
Yeah, yeah.
Or if it was part
So, so it, if
Okay.
I was just gonna say, i- if it's a single-family residential home, uh, it's a PUD, like Trailwoods, that is single, it, it is single-family for all intents and purposes. It is a single-family development. Any, any single-family, um, residents could apply for a state license for a group or a family daycare home in that PUD. Because it's the underlying, we would look at that as a single-family residential district. Now, a daycare center is different because that's a commercial operation, and, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, couldn't go there unless they did the, the, went through the process to change the PUD to allow it.
Now, why would we want somebody to have to go through the planning commission to start a daycare in a school that was in a, an existing school in a residential area? That just seems, um, yeah, I mean, most schools have aftercare programs that have to be licensed. You know, uh, churches, I, I, I just don't, I, I think that's overly, uh, you, you know, more regulation than we need. Yeah. Um, just because Um, just because you're, if you're a school or you're a church, you're already dealing with traffic, you're already dealing with kids, you're already. Dealing with those things that would need to be licensed, but I don't see that we'd need to waive.
We just have the ability to waive.
But they'd have to come.
They have to apply.
Well, the reason that, the, I, I think, the way I see it is the, the reason. That you even have the ordinance is that you want to make sure that people are following certain best practices. A, B, we're following the state statute. Um, you know. So if, if we do an inspection of, let's say, a school, um, daycare center. And they don't have an outdoor player, then, or they don't have a four foot. Fence.
And, and then, but that goes to the license requirements. Why are we imposing requirements? That are part of their licensing and could be at odds with licensing.
If language changes.
If the language changes. That's what, that's my whole point, cause they were talking about updating to the, the, one of the latest things is having a nature-based. Um, play area. And you have natural borders as opposed to fencing. And, and so, yeah. That'll do it, yeah. Um.
That would discourage climbing.
Um, but, you, you know, so it, it got me thinking about, I don't, I, you know, I want to make sure. I agree with Spark. I want to make it as easy as possible for. You know, childcare to happen in S I O township and I, I don't wanna. It, it, you know, it takes us forever to update its zoning ordinance. It may take them a year to redo administrative rules. And they bring administrative rules up every so often.
I understand your point. In and of itself. But I, that would actually go for many ordinances we have. Why do we have a wastewater treatment ordinance? Cause the state.
The state didn't have them. Originally.
Okay, so.
First, almost.
Alright, well, I'll try to think of another example.
But it's just licensing. They, I mean, you have to go through, you submit it to the fire, a B F S, you have to have a fire marshal go through it. You have to have, um, licensing, you have to submit papers, you have an inspection. I mean, it, the licensing rules are relatively robust. Um, for, you know.
So let's say a person is in violation of the licensing rule. And we find out there's some pretty serious stuff going on at daycare. What's our remedy?
State laws.
The state, you report it to the state. They, they hold the responsibility for licensing and the credentialing of all the employees, the.
I understand that. So we would have, and, you know, I mean, I can't think of anything, but let's just say it's something pretty raunchy. We could not shut that down.
I don't think we could anyway. I don't know.
It's not building code violative or i- is, is it about behavior?
Well, let's just say, I mean. I mean, some of these things, some of these things, um, cross, um. Uh, many governmental units. So for instance, if there was sexual abuse going on at a daycare, obviously that would implicate. Uh, the prosecutor's office, the police, et cetera. So, but.
Mold infestation or something, building.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm just saying, what could, you know, I think part of, it's the same thing if we're looking at this renewable energy ordinance. So we don't really need a renewable energy ordinance, except. We want one because of A, B, and C. Because the state has regulated that pretty heavily. But we've, if, um, we've decided that we want our own too. So, I'm just kind of playing devil's advocate. I'm not disagreeing with you.
The state only, it with solar or, ordinance, it's only at a certain level. We're, we're really tailoring our ordinance to the smaller. Community solar. Uh, options. That it.
And you're doing that why?
To, to be able, so it's allowed, cause it's not allowed right now.
State didn't allow it by their, by their legislation.
They only regulate.
Just the flip side of that is what we don't, what we don't want to allow. We consider all the time what we don't want to allow. So I'm just, I'm just kind of playing devil's advocate a little bit.
Keep going.
Is it to limit the, um, areas of the township that they can do it in, or is that covered by the state legislation?
No, the state legislation just has to do with size. Oh, sorry.
That's okay. So does the state say where it could be?
The state says that we have to allow family daycare homes, that's the seven children and less. As a permitted use in all residential, single family residential zoning districts.
So if, if that's our go-to anyway, then we don't, we're redundant. But if we were to allow it in industrial areas. As well, then that's why we would want to put it in ours if we wanted it.
Yeah, so the state only regulates, only says where the very smallest family daycare home, we have to allow them in single family residential. It doesn't, it, it doesn't say. Wait, you know, it, it says that we could make group, the group homes a conditional use. It allows us to do that. Um, in, in the single family residential districts, and that's the six to twelve children. But daycares, we can, we can provide, allow as permitted uses in certain districts. We can allow them as conditional uses. That's, that's up to our purview.
And that's six to twelve children, did you say?
For the group, for group.
Plus two?
Plus two, if the state allows it in their license.
So to Jan's point, is there anything in what you have drafted here? That is more permissive than the state minimums? Or can we just live with the state's? Rules?
This language was taken from the state zoning enabling act and the childcare organization act. So these are the, these are the same, um, these are not more restrictive, they're not more lax, they are the same regulations.
So.
We are living our existing ordinance.
Right.
To be current.
So what if we eliminated our existing ordinances? Would we lose any? Any control?
Um, we, well, so we have to, the state says we have to allow these uses as permitted uses. So in order for a use to be allowed, it has to be listed in our ordinance as a permitted use. If, if a use is not listed in the ordinance, it just, it means it's not allowed.
Okay. So you can't just rely on the states?
No. That would be too easy, Bob.
That would be too easy. Okay, you got me there.
Alright. Um.
So Laura, you've defined increased capacity as a new definition, uh, on page. I guess, top of page three, the addition of one. The addition, work, so that, that's the definition. Where's the meat of that?
That's the, that is the state's definition. And so when we write these things, we, yeah, when we write these things, we, we use the state's definition, so.
Oh, but thirty-six dash five is definitions. So we're defining what it is, but where does it say it shall be allowed? Or is that allowed in the definition as well?
So it's allowed, it says, it says in the definition that one child in a family daycare home and two children.
Just defining capacity.
It's, it's defining increased capacity for a family and a.
No, usually, it's like thou shall not commit adultery, see adultery under definitions.
We can, we can say that. Uh, I mean, we can make it clear that it's, you know, um, under a family daycare home.
I, I, yeah, I guess I don't look for, um, statutory provisions in definitional aspects of statutes. So, now that, that's. Uh, cause I, I see increased capacity defined, but I don't see that it's allowed under what. I, I guess, yeah.
Okay, I, I got you.
So it must be in their Michigan rules or statute, it must be.
Yes, sorry.
Used in some kind of way. So they added a definition of it.
So, yeah, it, it, it. Yeah, I think.
So to address Commissioner Risers' comment, I'm just gonna add in each of the fam- at the, under. A, uh, four B and A four C, and I, I think this is wrong, but, um, numbered wrong, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
See increased capacity definition.
Right, right.
In parents after the definition.
Right. I, I, I would think that, you know, an additional. If granted by the state. Yeah, or, you know.
Okay, so, um, the. What I was questioning was, it just. It, a little bit, and I, I, I understand better now when you say that these things are in the legislation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the outdoor play area in the draft rules, you know, when they talk about fencing, they also say. Um. You know, they, they. They, they talk about, or a natural barrier that's at least four feet. And I'm wondering, you know, we talk about to, you, you know, we sort of add that section about that discourages climbing or something like that. I'm just wondering, or, um. I- if we could add that similar language so that. There's a little bit more flexibility.
What page are you on or what?
This is in, um, page forty-three of the, of.
This is C, draft five.
Okay, yeah, alright.
Yeah.
I have a question about that area too, Laura. Why no higher than six feet? Do you know?
That's what the law says. But in our ordinance, we allow for, for fences that are seven feet tall in residential districts.
A lot of municipalities don't, don't want them over six feet. And why is it great climbing?
I would think maybe safety egress.
Yeah, but you don't have to say, you know, that, one of the things that I worry about is. I'd rather have the responsibility for the licensing, they have to do a safety review, they have to do a safety plan. I'd rather have it all rest.
With that.
With that.
Mm-hmm.
The authority that oversees it and we're just talking, you know. We're doing what we have to do legally, but also trying to make it flexible for.
So what happens, um, so, cause you know.
Yeah.
As well as I do. That, um. Governmental attention and priorities change with administrations. I E Gilman. And other issues as well. I mean. That's, that's happened, uh, within S I O township government. So, um. I say that to say that, um. Sometimes we have to have our regulation because the state of Michigan is a little floppy on things. But. I also feel like. How, how will we be able to cover all the inadequacies of this?
If they change, then we're in conflict.
Right, and, yeah. I mean, that would be less. Restrictive than the state if we added something of, that was. Similar to, or meets licensing, other, licensing requirements or something like that.
I have a question for you, Laura. In your memo, you, you say you're partnering, partnering with Ann Arbor Spark. Um, I find it interesting that, that they're, um. Involved in this, but it, it's come up in, uh, the, uh, W two rag meetings about. Um. Trying to. Direct the, or ask, or. Um, nudge the county to create, think about more planning. Um, and so Chelsea City has, uh, uh, put together a letter in their regard and is asking other townships. Because there's certain shared, um. Uh, issues that come up for all of us. And Spark has gotten involved and they're interested in using that letter to, to, because they deem housing. Um. An, an issue within their scope of interest. Um, to further. Uh, businesses and, uh, employees, et cetera. So it's interesting that they're working with you on this, um. I just wanted to make that statement. I just thought that was interesting when I saw Ann Arbor Spark, your memo.
Yeah, I believe, I have to check, but I believe they approached us to, to do this work for them.
Yeah, they're, uh, they're, uh. Uh, energetic.
Shadnifer with Ann Arbor Spark was asked by the state of Michigan. They were tasked with doing childcare, uh. Facilitation, I guess is a good word for it, to try to grow the ability for more childcare. Uh, child, uh. Care facilities, so that way there could also be business generation growth. Because if people have places for their kids to be watched while they're at work. More people can move into communities, more people are able to grow with those, the businesses.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, it's great. I've just never seen Spark.
For some recent-ish addition of last year.
See, they're so interested in affordable housing, et cetera, and daycare before.
Is, is there, is there a timeline for this? Is like, does the new legislation? Like, why is this before us at this juncture? Because where we, oh, we thought we should have done a while ago, or, cause. The law says we have to do it?
There's no timeline. Um, we had an opening, um, at this meeting with little to discuss. Um, this was prepared and ready to be kind of a next, next discussion topic.
No, I don't mean for S I O. I mean, is, is, what, is there a push? Kind of across the state for this to happen? Or like, our municipality is expected to have something in line by. First quarter twenty twenty-five or A S A P or.
Believe it, it's a push, um, necessarily. I think, um, in our case, I think we meet. Uh, the majority of these, these requirements anyway. We have it in our ordinance. We allow it as a permitted use in single fa-. You know, family homes and single family districts. It, we have it in the appropriate districts, um, for the family and group daycare homes. Um, you, you know, we just reviewed a daycare not too long ago. Um, it's actually gonna go to the board, I think, at the next meeting. So these are not, you know, this is not something that I think we, uh, need to worry about necessarily. Um, or rush to do, to do anything with. Um, I like all the ideas about the natural barrier, adding the community center. I think those are all, um. Good, good topics, but no, there is no timeline that I'm aware of, that there's a, that this has to be done by a certain period of time, certain quarter, certain month. No.
So, do, are there? Maps or data with respect to how many family dairy, family daycare homes? Which is, uh, one to seven and how many group daycare homes, which are seven to twelve in S I O? Like how many? Somebody keep track of the licensing?
Yeah, the state would. I'm just trying to see if they have a, a public list.
They should have a public list. Um, that's something probably I can have my map people work on.
And to the extent that there is a pre-existing lawful. You know, uh, uh, use. And, and this, we change our ordinance, would it apply to people who've already established themselves or would it be, uh, applied prospectively?
No, anything, anything that exists would exist, um, as long as they remain licensed and in good standing with the state. Or if they've already received a conditional use permit or, um, a zoning compliance from us. Um, they would remain in, in good standing. This would only apply to new applicants.
And do you see?
If this were, if this were adopted, of course.
Do you see this ordinance, if adopted, like, helping the problem with? Uh, working families, single parents, whomever needing daycare?
You know, I think, I think a big part of what Spark was trying to accomplish was to make sure that municipalities were providing for these uses. In the ordinance, right? To make sure that, um, this was a use that's listed. Um, and we already do that. So I don't know that this will change what we do, um, you know, very much.
Are there other, are there other adjacent nearby, uh, communities, municipalities that are? Pretty restrictive on this stuff?
Have to look at my list, um.
No names, please.
There are, I mean, basically, it looks to me like the majority of Washtenaw County communities are, are really. Similar to our, to what our ordinance says. And so I think there's just the new, um, separation distance and the outdoor area, probably.
The Nancy play area?
The, no, so the outside area, um, requirement, the area requirement was increased, yes. The, no, so the outside area, um, requirement, the area requirement was increased, yes.
Probably one hundred square feet or fifty square feet per kid?
Yes.
And the capacity.
Mm-hmm, and the best.
Six hundred.
Yeah. So I guess the other, if if we can look at, you know, the natural barriers, I also would like to, um, I I just, I. Personally, I'd like them to be able to just. It wouldn't have to go through a waiver if they're operating within existing school, houses of worship, community center, I'm just trying to think of other.
Whatever.
Or similar facilities, um, it's in.
Last page.
The last page, yeah.
Is that verbatim from the statute?
Yes.
Not from M Z E A, but from the Childcare Act, whatever it is?
Wanted to be more per- permissive, it should be okay, right?
It should be okay, if you're more permissive, if you're allowing it in additional additional space, yeah, I mean. I'd have to look and see which act it came from, to be honest, John, I'm not sure which one, um.
And do we define as major or minor thoroughfare? Though that our our master plan.
Yes.
Efficiently sets out what are major and minor?
Yes.
Then versus connector?
Yes.
Yes, I'm not.
There's a map.
And your concern, for me, this is a permissive, a more permissive. Hypothetically, someone establishes a place of worship off one of our gravel rooms and they have single family use. They get that grant and then come back later and say, hey, we want to put in a daycare. They still have to get us to waive it, and we can't. Whereas by the state law, they're not on a major thoroughfare unless we waive that condition.
Well, that would be a conditional use as opposed to just a waiver, I I don't see any reason why to. That they would have to come to Planning Commission if it was a school to establish a daycare, an aftercare program in a school.
If they're on a dirt road.
No, it doesn't have anything to do with the dirt road.
This last seat is about major or minor thoroughfare.
Oh, well, I wasn't, I was dealing with the. Existing church thing.
So I just, I just wanna just kind of, I think. Uh, so if it's in a school, if it's in a school, a public school, zoning does not apply.
Right.
Zoning doesn't apply to public schools, so this would be a private school.
A private school.
Or, um, uh, for example, two four two church, they just, you know, they're going through the conditional use process, that's what's required. From their zoning perspective, um, I'd have to look through the ordinance and see where daycare facility, I think, where daycare facilities are permitted versus conditional. Um, group homes are conditional use in residential areas, that's the six to twelve children, so they do currently have to go through. Um, uh, conditional use approval, I know that there had was one recently, probably in the last year and a half, where a number of neighbors came and expressed some concern. Um, so I it just, we can talk about where they're allowed currently as permitted and conditional uses. Um. In in our next conversation, maybe, I think that would.
Uh huh.
I think that would be great.
On on big picture, Laura, uh. Does this come back to us, does it go to a public hearing, does it go to the Board of a recommendation, what what's your, what what do you envision for this?
So this would come back for another discussion, um, after you're comfortable with the draft language, then we would set a public hearing. Um, at that time, you would take any public comments and then make any further revisions, um, once you're. You know, uh, if, once you get settled in that language, then I would send it to Mariah for review. And then it would, uh, be placed on a township board, um, agenda for discussion, I think they also hold a public hearing for a text amendment. Um. So, yeah, this is the very beginning of the process and there's no rush.
I'd be interested in at least data or maybe a map that kind of said where the, uh. Current, like, nomenclature, right, the, uh, family daycare homes and the group daycare homes are. You know, and, um. Um. If that's. If the map's too much work, there may be just a a charter, you know?
The licenses would have addresses and you can, you can map it.
Yeah, I think I think a map will be fairly easy to, if we can get the list, I mean.
Child childcare hub information records portal, which looks to be. Somehow affiliated with the state, uh, seems to have a list of people, Ann Arbor and, uh, Dexter. Four one oh three, four one three oh, and make sure you delineated which ones were SIO and the Ann Arbor zip code. And we can map it.
Yeah, and then just key them three different colors, you might as well do the daycare centers too, because that don't be included in that, and then that will also have an idea of. You know, do we have plenty, or?
Yeah, or or truly be worried.
You should, yeah, and then, and then I also think I'd like your idea of looking at where they're permitted and where they're conditional use, because. We maybe, um, you know. Looking at. Jackson Road zoning and and that type of thing, there. I don't know where it comes in with commercial, you know, in commercial districts or industrial, whatever, we have lots of different zoning.
Alright, thanks.
Yeah, okay, yeah, no, that's good. Um, do you? I'm also willing to ask, I'll also investigate where they are with the. Two thousand and four rules and how those interface with this legislation. Especially, you know, some of the, the.
Twenty twenty-four rules.
Where the administrative rules and how they're interfacing with this legislation, because there seems to be, you know, some. I don't know. Yeah.
Yeah, I was just looking at those and they look to be a little more strict strident. Programming and all kinds.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what you have to go through to get licensed, yeah. It's it's not an easy. And it's good to see them being a little more open about different kinds of programs. Okay, um. Any other, uh, requests or comments? Right, and well, uh. Yeah, thank you very much, Laura, no, I think it's, I mean, that's a good thing to want to support.
Yep, you know.
Family stuff, what?
You want to support this?
Yeah, I think, I I think there seems to be a consensus to make it as as easy as possible. Okay. Then let's go ahead and, um, we'll move to, we have no new business, um, the reports and commission. Activity. And. Okay, Laura, did you have, um, a report that you wanted to?
Just that at our next meeting, we, I think we have three public hearings, so that's just the way, just the way it got timed out, so, um, well, you got an easy night tonight, be prepared.
What day is that, so I can come sick?
November nineteenth.
It's November nineteenth, it's our last, it's on a Tuesday too, which is.
It is on a Tuesday, yes.
It's a Tuesday.
It's on a Tuesday. Don't know, because of something.
I mean, it's.
I have a conflict every third Monday and because of elections, we had issues with our scheduling.
Did you say November nineteenth?
Yes.
Yes.
At seven P M, and what are those three public hearings on?
Um, there is a rezoning of one parcel, a conditional rezoning of a parcel, and I think we're going to get many hands, uh, P U D.
That, uh, okay.
That's what I mean.
What, what's?
Those are the three, I'm sorry.
A conditional rezoning of a parcel?
Yep, and a rezoning of a single parcel.
Oh, of a single parcel, there are two separate rezones?
Two separate rezonings, and then the planned unit development for many hands. The preliminary.
Okay, from what to what? From like, like, from agriculture to commercial or from something?
So, um, the, the, there's one on West Liberty Road that will go from office service to C four. To allow, um, recreation facility, it's next to the Athletic Club.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and then the property next to the Dexter A and W. I believe that is, um, conditional from, um. I don't recall, I don't, actually, I don't recall the zoning, but it's it's a one parcel change, um, there.
Yeah.
Transmission shop?
No, it's a vacant property.
Okay.
Vain property, I think it's the.
Must be in between, yes, A and W and the transmission shop.
Yeah, can it, that little stretch in there is SIO, isn't that crazy?
Well, it's the way they cut Dexter out of SIO. Okay.
Okay, that'll be, that'll be interesting.
And Laura, is there anything new to report on whether or not other planners, uh, municipal attorneys, et cetera, are recommending a CREO or not?
So, um, I don't know if you've heard about the order that, um. It came down from the Michigan, from Michigan State, yeah, then, whatever, um. So basically, every, every attorney I talked to says, it's on hold, everything's on hold to see how all, you know, and there's potential litigation. Um, coming forward from a group of municipalities to the state regarding the regulations, so. Um, and, you know, Mariah has our ordinance, um, we've kind of placed it on hold for a minute, we may decide to move forward with the language outside of the the CREO portion. Um, but, you know, we we haven't discussed it at length yet, so you might see that coming back without the CREO portion for the time being. Um. I mean, the state, if they, if they allow it, we don't have, you know, I mean, we don't have to have a CREO. Um. We we might be more concerned about those smaller facilities anyway, and it might be beneficial for us to move forward with that language, but.
Um, I'm I'm lost, I'm sorry. What's the CREO?
The CREO is the Compatible Renewable Energy Ordinance, so basically the state is saying.
Small scale solar.
Large scale, large scale, um, it's the, it's the capacity, the nameplate capacity, where. Large scale projects, um, cannot be, our ordinance cannot be more restrictive than the state's regulations. And they're saying in that order that we we can provide nothing, um, additional, not not location. Um, it has to be the exact same language that the state provides.
Yep. Okay, and and then Lauren and I have a, we have a meeting with, um. Uh, Chuck Hookum, who he installs, well, he has installed a lot of, um, utility solar for, um, consumers, but he also does. Um, is involved with Homeland Solar doing, you know, all scale of solar, just to go and make sure that the the language that we're using. Is understandable by the the contractors who also have to abide by though.
Was he at the sustainability fair? Chelsey guy there?
No, no, well, that was, that was Larry Kerber from Homeland Solar. Yeah, 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 Chuck is, um, he's retired from, uh, consumers now. So we're just, yeah, one kind of another, uh, type of, uh, review. Um, okay. Uh, and, um, while we're on planning, um, I think last night didn't, uh, Crossroads came in asking for a TIF, right?
Yeah, there was a, there was a presentation, uh, by Nathan Vogt, um, uh. Is he O C E D, got from county, the county. Yeah, county development, something, and he he kind of coordinates brownfields and tiffs and things like that. And there, there was, uh, also an attorney, uh, who deals with development and tiffs, and there was, uh, Dan Ketteler. Um, and and it's, um, it's regarding a, um. Uh, a potential request, a likely request for a brownfield. Tiff and Brownfield is in quotes. Yeah, Brownfield is in quotes, so it would be a, an affordable housing TIF. Uh, so, so in order to have forty-three, uh. Eighty percent AMI, so, you know, some, so, so, I don't want to say submarket housing, we'll say affordable housing, call it so many units. And then they, they, uh, there's the state law that in order to promote housing allows municipalities, uh, to have a TIF. Where the increase in taxes from the development don't go to the township, it goes to the, uh, to the developer to help, uh, underwrite the cost of the project. And, uh, there were some on the, uh, uh, on the board, many on the board, several on the board, however you want to say it, that thought that. Uh, if you wanted a TIF or needed a TIF to fund it, it should have said so from day one and included it. And 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 that's a valid, that's a valid point.
Not to mention, there's no affordable housing in his plan.
But he would have to price it that way.
I, no, no, I, I, I'm not saying.
In which I've spoken to him directly.
I I'm not saying it's not bootstrapped to try to try to get.
This man is unbelievable.
Help underwrite his project, and that's more, and and I I think there's going to be. The board reluctance to do it, um, uh, so like if you. You know, here's your plan, it got approved, it was a four to three vote, it was controversial, go and do it, and you know, I I don't know.
Give me something else.
I don't know that, I don't know that it'll have support for a TIF. Because the TIF kind of comes off the top, it kind of comes off everything, remember, there's a lot of. A P U D that are community benefits, so, you know, are you using our tax increases to in part? Fund your community benefits that you promised for utilities, for fire, for for pathway construction, for all the other community benefits and, you know?
What does TIF stand for?
Tax increment.
Financing.
I don't know what the other F stands for, my apologies, but it's a, like a D D A is a TIF, so the the, it's a way of capturing the taxes that would otherwise go to. Municipalities, to libraries, to community colleges, to the other, you know, to other thing, other governmental things, and it gets used internally to, uh, funding is kind of like.
Yeah, so, and and they've recently, it used to be just for brownfields, and like John said, they've changed the legislation to go can be used for affordable housing.
And even regular housing. Believe it or not.
What?
Even regular housing. Yeah, so, so it's it's kind of new, and 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 it's it's novel, I don't know that they've done any in Washtenaw County yet, they're, they're looking at it.
They didn't list any.
Yeah, 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 so, um.
That's an interesting tool.
Taken up under the new board, and, uh, I don't know that, uh, the new board is going to be, uh, I don't know that he'll get one vote. Uh, from the new board, I just don't, you know, nothing's for gone, or gone, but, uh, didn't appear to be, uh.
Sly.
It didn't appear to be, uh, over, it didn't, it didn't get a warm welcome. When he broached the topic.
Because, you know, I, in a pre-op meeting, after he was pre-approved. I mentioned the issue of affordable housing, and this is close to a quote, we can't get funding. Mortgages for affordable housing. When you have it mixed, like, it's got to be all affordable housing. Or all regular housing, it can't be mixed, so, I mean, I'm just saying that this is a man that has, um.
Answers.
Um, no, that has resisted. Any idea of affordable housing, like he was about E Vs, now he's on board with E Vs, but okay.
Okay, yeah, I I mean, you know, I think it's a tool that would be interesting for the planning commission to understand too.
Sure.
Well, absolutely, yep.
But, but.
I I don't want to.
A holistic approach where it's kind of envisioned from day one.
Yeah.
Bring that up at the last minute or the.
After the last.
But we're out of our purview here. Okay, yes, okay, um, whatever.
This is going to be.
I've been on that project, I've been on that project for a while. Um, so, um, and I've even been on the project to the point that I would ask to be on the new pre-op meetings because. I forget the guy's name, but he's a little shifty, but anyway, um. So anyway, I kind of find it interesting, thank you for that.
Okay, yeah, I I thought we should know about that, um, anything else, uh, Laura?
I don't, I don't have anything else, I thought I was finished.
All right, so, uh, I just want to, uh, for the chair's report, I want to update, um, Jackson Road, last night, O H M, uh. O H M was the recommended person to seek a proposal from, and, um, they did have a a whole cadre of, uh. Well-qualified consultants, um, so we're, uh, getting, we're getting a, a specific proposal that meets our, our budget, so there'll probably be some scope adjustments from the grant, because we did ask for. The world, um, but that's, that's fine, uh, and then it'll most likely, hopefully, that'll have to go to the new board for approval, and then that'll be covered. Um, the budget was forty thousand from SEMCOG, ten thousand from, um, SIO. And, uh, the plan would be to kind of start kicking that off in January, they would have to. With that proposal be a schedule and, yeah, a scope. They would have to, with that proposal, be a schedule and, yeah, scope and so forth, so we kind of know where we're heading. We have to finish that up, I believe, I think it's July, June or July, so it will be a condensed sort of piece. The last J-RAG meeting has been scheduled for November twenty-first.
It was all invited. People that were on that email.
That were, well, you know, it's an open meeting, it's the core group, but it's, it's an open meeting.
You are, yeah.
This is the most.
It was sent to the planning. So you were included in the email.
Fluid membership.
John is a voted member.
Because Mr. Brusso, Mr. Brusso and Kathy Knoll were at it, but Mr. Brusso is no longer going to be in office on November twenty-first, so.
So, yeah. It'll be, at least the core of us who've been meeting, so we'll be there, okay. I also wanted to ask, I had a, we were talking about the city Van Arbers developing their new comprehensive plan. I did approach Brett Leonard, I had a chance to talk with him a little bit after one of our, one of their presentations. And say, hey, you know, you haven't talked to SIO yet, and he is willing to have a conversation. It would, it would need to be, you know, a, a, a small group meeting and just talk about the interface and what they're planning and how, you know, SIO and Ann Arbor. So, yeah, if there, so I'm looking for a couple of volunteers that would be interested in doing that.
And what is this, the Ann Arbor is working on, what?
Their comprehensive plan, which is their master plan.
Oh, so how it interface with SIO. What is their vision? Is that what you asked me?
Yeah, and they, they, actually today, they had a day-long sort of session at the public library going through, and I can send you guys a link to it. And so, Rob, and if I know anyone else, if there's anyone else that's interested, please send a link to the comprehensive plan. They're doing some things, interesting things there. They're also looking at reducing the number of zoning, so it's, it, there are fewer zoning classifications for it.
Extremely, where they went down to in one case.
Yeah, it was, yeah. Oh, okay, great. Thank you. Oh, you know what, let's, I will actually have the copy on it, and so that we can, yeah. They're doing, I think they're doing some very interesting work.
Part of the outreach they're going, getting surveys like that.
Yeah, and so it's going to take them probably another year to finish it up. All right. ESTF, the HVAC replacement report was, and the recommendations and so forth is in the meeting package for the BOT last night, but they had too many things going on, so they bumped us to November twelfth. And then, okay, our next meeting, I just want to, moving forward. I was thinking Ryan, you'll be able to do any pre-op meetings until the, through the nineteenth. But Andrea, would you be available then? You're on for the pre-op meetings in December.
Kristy already asked me about one for November. So I think I've shifted, because she sent me a note asking if I was available on either the fifth or the twelfth.
Oh, that was because, oh, that's interesting.
I was also, I guess let me, let me back up and explain to what I'm aware of of that situation. Which is, I was asked, it was confirmed with Mariah last night, that it would be okay, since I still have the planning commission, even if I am elected official otherwise. And I believe I am attending in the meeting, I got a calendar invite earlier, and I will have to find where it went. I think it's on the, no, it's on the fifth, because we were trying to vote electric, it's going to be on the twelve. I think at two o'clock.
Then you can ignore it. Okay, fine. I just wanted to get that, and then if there are reappointments made at that first BOT meeting, which I'm, I'm, I don't know, but.
I guess people are occupying with other things.
It depends a little bit what you mean by first BOT as well.
I think you, don't you take office on the twentieth in November?
Yes, and there may be a meeting that day that goes more than ten minutes. I don't know if they'll have appointments or not, that's outside of my purview.
Okay, so in any event. So if there are new appointments, Andrea, you still, would you still be available to cover? Well, they just come up, they just come up and Kristy emails you and stuff. Okay, so we can, we can, we can say either of you would be available, so that, that will work, okay. It's called a pre-op meeting, it's where the developer comes in either before they're willing, they're going to apply, or it's, it's an application meeting, a formal meeting where they actually have a proposal. So it's, yeah, when the, when the fire department reviews it, utilities, planners, engineers, and they all, they have typically have a planning commission member there. And you kind of rotate it through. We put you at the end of the year, so you had time to learn the ropes a little bit. Okay, and that is, is a paid meeting. Okay. All right, so. I think that was it. Oh, and then just our next meeting is the, is the Tuesday, the nineteenth, and then our January meeting.
Is there a twenty-fifth meeting after the twenty-fifth?
No, the next one is December second, and that's the last one for the year. And then January, it's one thirteen and one twenty-seven. I think there are a bunch of holidays or something.
December second, not the ninth?
Yes.
Right, it's the second, yeah.
It's our last meeting of the year.
Yeah, not the sixteen. Yeah, and then one thirteen and one twenty-seven are the dates that will be coming up on the calendars, so you can.
And not the twenty-third either.
Right.
One thirteen, twenty-five, and one twenty-seven, twenty-five.
So we, we want to be pretty, and, and this goes to Laura too, we want to be mindful of that, because that's a long gap, you know, for.
Consideration.
Consideration of, of things, yeah, yeah, okay. So, that's my report. All right, BOT, any questions on?
We're doing a lot of stuff with the warmer, trash, trash, so. I, I started it, I started my report on it, and, but we have another warmer meeting tomorrow. It warms this regional trash thing, and, and, you know, we have this contract with priority. You're right.
Is it W-O-R-M-A?
No, it's W-R-R-M-A.
Yeah, and they have a webpage too. Oh, and I, I did forget to mention for ESTF, we have eighty-five responses from that composting survey already, and very.
People that wants to be part of the.
There was only one that was negative. All the, all the responsive has been bad. I was, I was, I mean, I mean it touched a, a need, I think.
So, so with respect to BOT, I've got a two-page start of the warm-up update. Yeah, and then I got last night's BOT to do, and then I've got tomorrow's warm-up meeting to do. And, but the, the takeaway is that the contract with priority waste expires in November twenty-twenty-five. The initial term of the current contract is for five years, but it can be extended at a five, for an additional five years at the sole option of priority waste. So we're going to be done with GFL slash priority waste next November with six months' notice, unless they want us to re-up, and then they can force us to re-up.
Can they force us, or is there any questions that they have to?
They literally can send township a letter saying.
They can exercise the option. Unless there's a breach of the contract, that council thinks it's worthy of a breach. So, 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 but, but. So.
That's if we, that's if we buy into the warm-up.
No, 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 WORMA is a voluntary organization, and they're likely to contract with trash hauler. Because.
For ten years.
Yeah, maybe even longer. What's driving the buzz is that three big jurisdictions, Pittsfield Township, Ipsy Township, I, I want to get them right. No, the, the current contracts of four WORMA members, Pittsfield Township, Celine City, Ipsy Township, Ipsy City are expiring in October twenty-twenty-five, one month before SIO townships. And they're in the process of getting quotes for municipal trash hauling services via an RFP. And they're going to come up with a model contract, and that model contract could likely be the template for other adjacent nearby municipalities, other than they can get their own riders, like you could have trash picked twice a week if you want, you could have sixty-five gallon or ninety-five gallon, or however many, you, you can get these little things, you could have compost picked up, you know, twenty bags, but, or two bags or whatever, so you can, you can tweak it for that, but there's going to be a, a template of a WORMA contract that's being reviewed now. Our attorney, Mariah Fink, is looking at it, reviewing it, giving input on it. Why? Even though it doesn't affect us? Because it could affect us down the road, either in, in, in one year, if the priority gives us the boot, or in six years, if priority gives, when, when we're done there.
Or if we give them the boot before it, one year is up.
What's that?
There are reasons in the contract for us to cancel the contract during the contract duration.
That's right, that's right, and, and then, and then at some point down the pike, it's going to be, well, do we want to have a single waste hauler, or do we want to have a couple of waste haulers, or do we want to let every person hire their own contractor, or do we want to let every subdivision HOA do their own, so, so that's, that's why I'm on page two of the draft, and, and with more to come tomorrow, okay? Or more to, more to, maybe.
When does our contract end?
Either, either in one year or six years. One year with, they are having the option to renew.
CBA?
There was no meeting in October, and I've not heard anything about a November meeting.
There will be a November meeting.
All right, Tappin?
Setback, solar panel setback.
All right, interesting. We would be interested in that one, just to, yeah. DDA?
We're not bad, meet again on the.
Okay, LPC and parks, anything there?
LPC, nothing to report out there. Parks, you know, they're, they're going to redo that path around there.
Over on the Flyers.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, it's going to be, and OHM is kind of doing the engineering for it, then we're going to contract it out to work. They want to make it ADA compatible, they want to have a kind of a connector sidewalk. They've approved a, a nature scape that an Eagle Scout is wanting, Eagle Scout candidate is working out to get his marabatch, and he's got some stakes lined out there, but you know, Matt and Chris Chang and Murphy are out there taking a look at if that's really the ideal place for it, because if we want to put a pavilion out there, we want to make sure, you know, just like a picnic for, 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 for.
Also, we need to look, I will send OHM then the geo field because we've got the geo field there and also in the parking lot, so.
I, I, what's a geo field?
For the HVAC system, the bores, to support that, depending on what system we go with.
Right, so, 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 I mean, it all has to be kind of, you know, and, and then another, another thing is like there were some on the DDA that had visions for a particular kind of park back there. But, but all of them had an idea for a pavilion somewhere. And just, just so you could, we could have group meetings, or so when Murphy does her let's look at the stars, or look at the bats, or the things that she's now doing up there, which is pretty cool, that she's doing that. That, that there'd be a, a thing to do, so where a pavilion should go, and the path should go, and the nature scape should go, and now find out there's going to be big, big holes for whatever, so, so all that.
Okay, cool.
So.
All right.
Let Murphy, let, let Murphy and Matt know that, because they're, they're scoping out.
Great, I will send that.
Possible locations for.
I mean, it's fine afterwards.
Not that we have plans for it, but like.
It would just be a sequence, it, it wouldn't interfere with anything, it would just be the sequence, you wouldn't want to, you know, do that, and then the drilling rigs can mess it all.
Right through the middle.
No, 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 so, yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay. Western Watershed Council.
Haven't met yet, we're meeting tomorrow.
Your calendar's just committed to date though.
Yes, oh yes, if any, there are calendars there, if anyone would like.
I won't take one.
I was in the office when the delivery arrived.
All right, okay, Western Washtenaw Group? You, you submitted a.
W two reg.
Georgia Frost, the assistant to Dingle, says that Dingle will be coming to our fire, fire station Halloween event.
I guess we better be tableing, huh?
What questions do we have for her?
It's an interesting Lima Township talked about their redoing their master plan. This might be relevant for us. Because, and they're looking at clustering housing development in one area of the township, leaving the other area of the township rule, which is similar, and I say interesting for us because I've noted that a couple times it's come up at our, our Jackson Road meetings, what about the rural part? And my sense is that people just want to keep that upfront. People in the community, residents, want to keep that issue upfront about development, 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 and this, I think this is going on all over, so for instance, in Dexter. You know, there are those that, you know, see, you know, planning for housing, et cetera, et cetera, and but the citizens want, have expressed a desire to keep the small charm, small-town charm the way it is. So, as smart people do, they're going to do some surveying to see what people mean by small-town charm, as if they don't know. But I thought that was kind of interesting, but I, it seems like this particular issue, and we've had this issue come to, come to, come to us. And I'll just say this, I wa, I wonder if we ought to and maybe we, we, we've done it already, because we've been using, we've been focusing on having more density for housing on our Jackson Road corridor, so maybe we're already doing that. But I worry, because I, in one of these, our two rag meetings, there was discussion about density and housing, and older people that are their children have already moved on, and they're taking up a four-bedroom house that a young couple could have, and all of that stuff. And, and, and I said to them, I said, well, there's a finite amount of land, albeit the townships have all the open land, that's why we're all primed for development. Albeit, the townships have all the open land, that's why we're all primed for development. But there is a finite amount of land, and what happens when we get there? And one of the people said, then we'll just go up. And I, and and I started out getting on this mission, uh if you recall, by. Being concerned about big developments around our rural area, and I'm still concerned about development. Um, and uh, so. I'm saying all that to kind of remind us about where we're at with that and what we're gonna do into the future, because. I'm not the only one, I mean, it sounds like residents are concerned about it too, so.
Yeah, um, great, well, that's uh all of our reports. If anyone has anything else to add. Right, no, we have the public comment.
Sorry, Jeff.
So, I'll open our final public comment at eight thirty-one. All right.
I have a couple of questions to ask.
All right.
What's your name again?
Uh, Roland. So, when you guys are talking, you guys are using abbreviations.
Yes.
I still have trouble with that too, I'm.
Uh, you were talking about E U D, what is?
Yeah, a planned unit development, which is a, yeah, you need to go, yeah, thank you. Um. Yeah, um, a planned unit development is a special zoning that allows for flexibility, so. Um, it it it, it's often used for mixed uses, and so it's more of a negotiated development. Between the uh municipality and the developer.
And you said you lived out here, you remember where the movie theater was on Jackson Road, used to be, like vaguely?
Yes, I do.
So that, that entire property, there's three different pieces of it, but that's an example of a P U D.
Commercial.
Yeah.
It's about to be residential slash commercial.
We hope. We hope.
Some someday somebody might build something.
Yeah, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Uh, the Spark Limits, like the Ann Arbor Spark Group you guys are talking about for childcare. There, like, what's their limits, like, where, like, where do they help at with that?
Ann Arbor Spark, well, it has the word Ann Arbor, and it is actually a countywide. Group or like gov- quasi-governmental agency that has the goal of growing. Economic development and businesses in the county, and the state, Spark means something I. Often don't know what, probably look at their website and say, uh, but they also. They're they're tasked in doing economic development for all of Washina County, they're also tasked with. Doing a lot of technology and innovation stuff with you of them.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, my last question, looking at the paper that I handed me. I think I know the answer to this, but it states same as C five and D five are the exact same thing. Is it just put in there because it's?
Number above that, like three, five, forty-five, um.
The zoning ordinance.
Yeah, zoning ordinance is admittedly, and that's, that's a what's called a redline copy, so it's still being worked on before we'll. Get to a final version of it that we'll actually bring back and. Have as the final.
Is yours black and white, or is it colored?
Color color.
Okay, yeah, so the blue is an underline that was, that's the proposed new.
Okay.
Uh, ordinance language, and then the cross-out is what would be deleted.
I think, I think what he's asking though is, sorry to interrupt, but.
No, go ahead.
I think the C on the, um, I guess the third page is for the group daycare standards.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the D is for the daycare centers, and those are defined earlier in the draft where. Group daycare hu- group daycare homes allow those six to twelve children, and a daycare would be, you know, more than twelve children. So they just have two different standards outlined in the ordinance.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming, what the class is for?
Uh, intro to urban planning, I need to take it for my uh G I S major, I guess. So you guys talked about.
Yes.
Uh, we, believe it or not, we we do a lot with G I S, there was a board meeting a couple of meetings ago where, and all of our meetings are on YouTube. On South Community News Channel on YouTube, there was a part of the meeting where the utilities director was actually showing all the cool G I S dashboards that he has. So, welcome, and thanks for covering.
Yeah, great. All right, um, we'll just focus online, uh, yes, Rob Pattinson.
Awesome.
All right, hi, Rob.
Hi, gang. Um, I wanna pick up on uh John's uh report about Crossroads. Um, Commissioner Moore's um analysis of that developer was absolutely spot on. And Crossroads should be.
Send it under a brown.
Crossroads should be a cautionary tale for the planning commission, because you had power and control over that. Um, proposal, and you gave it away when you sent it to the board with conditions. And what you assumed was that the developer would meet those conditions, and the developer performed V O C testing. But the V O C testing they performed, the state eagle scientist said were irrelevant. And did nothing to fulfill the requirements that the planning commission put on those conditions, so. Um, in the future, there should be a cautionary tale about there are going to be other developers just like this one. Who are not going to um behave in the, in the, with good intentions. And um, I also note that. This developer got through the the board of, uh, the board of trustees. With Supervisor Hathaway's help, and Trustee Brusso showed up for the first time in three months. After public comments and left before public comments, uh, and his only purpose there. Was to vote, to be the fourth vote to approve Crossroads, and so. You also have, when you give away your power over these proposals to the board of trustees. That may not, the the board of trustees may indeed not behave with honor and integrity, so. Um, the public benefit that Crossroads gave to the fire department. For their three-story apartment building or condo building. Uh, that needs a ladder truck, they gave the fire department ninety thousand dollars. And then they came back with this new brownfield uh proposal, and they're asking for eighteen million dollars. And that's something John didn't say, but the nerve and the gall of this developer. To offer ninety thousand dollars to the fire department for a fire truck that that they will need to use in their development. And then ask for eighteen million dollars back, um, was, again, that's a cautionary tale for the planning commission.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob.
Was it eighteen million?
Eighteen million, wow, that's a big number.
It's a whopping big number.
All right, thank you, that was a good follow-up, um, anyone else? No, right.
Move to close, public comment.
Oh, yeah.
As part.
Okay, move by Bob Walsh, supported by Friday F O. Close public comment, any further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, all right, public comment is closed at eight thirty-eight.
Motion adjourned. Support.
By uh Commissioner Gable, support by Commissioner Hyde, uh, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, all right, we are adjourned at eight thirty-nine, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.